I would like to call this meeting of the public schools, Robeson County Education to Orders, March the 11th, 2025 at 6:07. First, we will have a moment of silence. Before that, I want you to remember Ms. Lisa Gels, this custodian at Lumberton High School that recently passed away. Also, once again, keep Mr. Henry in your prayers, thoughts and prayers, him and his family. Now, we'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, we'll have the pledge allegiance by Oxendine Beta Club. Please stand.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on. Will you please let me introduce themselves?
My name is Bishop and I'm fourth grade.
My name is Marley, I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Haley, I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Ja'Kael and I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Kaylee and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Winter, I'm in sixth grade.
And they all talk louder than that, I don't know what's there, so shy now. Thank y'all for the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you. Before the adoption of the agenda, I would like to say Bradley Phillips is on virtual. All right. Adoption of the agenda. Emotion be made by Ms. Melissa Ocean to adopt the agenda, second be made by Mr. Crystal Monroe, all in favor? All opposed? Approval of open session minutes? Yes. All right. Emotion be made by Mr. Craig Lowry, second be made by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor? All opposed? That was unanimous. Yeah. All right, information items, we have Women History Month by Ms. Jessica Seeley.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and Board members. March is Women's History Month, this is a time when we celebrate the contributions of women to our society and our world. Many rights women enjoy today are the result of trailblazers who worked tirelessly to advocate for women's rights as individuals and as Americans. Through their courage and tenacity, they opened doors for women and they worked to ensure that women had a seat at the table where all the decisions were being made. This month, we acknowledge their voices and we celebrate Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Beta Club winners by Dr. Deborah Dallas. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Lynn, Dr. Emmanuel.
I just wanted to add a caveat to her, Jessica's statement, Women's Month is every month and every day.
Thank you, thank you for that, Dr. Emmanuel.
So, good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson and Board members. We are excited to share that we had several public schools of Robinson County students who earned top honors during the recent National Beta Club State Conventions at the Joseph S. Curry Convention Center in Greensboro. Students from various schools within the district competed with other students across North Carolina for top awards in various categories. The events included team competitions and individual showcases. So, tonight, we are going to just recognize these students. So, from deep branch, they did receive in the junior beta convention category of robotics, they placed fourth. Fair Grove Elementary School, in the elementary beta convention category, they had sculpture. Elementary, first place was Noah McFatter. Speech elementary, fourth place was Jeremiah Stevens. From Magnolia Elementary Beta, we had elementary performing arts, solo, duo, trio, variety act. Fourth place was David Rendon and Chloe Cook. And for junior beta, we had the junior performing arts, solo, duo, trio vocalist, first place, Natalie Oxendine and Aleah Hunt. For the premier performer vocalist, we had Natalie Oxendine and we also had, as I said, Aleah Hunt. So, congratulations to Magnolia. For Oxendine, at the elementary level, we had science, fifth grade, first place was Connor Gillespie. Was it for Oxendine? At Pembroke Elementary, in the elementary beta convention category, we had visual arts, hand drawn. Elementary, that was third place, Marlinda Perry. We had mixed media elementary, third place, Braylee Harris. On-site art drawing elementary, first place, Olivia Hunt. Visual arts painting, fifth place, Olivia Hunt. Performing arts elementary, small group, was second place. The premier performer elementary dancer was Jaden Herndon. The premier performer elementary singer was Gage Oxendine. In the premier performer elementary singer, also had Ja'Kaelie Lambert. We had visual arts recyclable art, that was fifth place, Charlie Oxendine. Visual arts two-dimensional design, elementary, that was third place as a group. Third place also for song fest. Visual arts jewelry, fifth place was Brynlee McNeil. And for academics, fifth grade science, third place was John Mark Jones III. For St. Paul's Elementary, in the elementary category of performing arts elementary, solo, duo, trio instrumentalist, first place was Tico Villanueva Perez. At Townsend Elementary, we had the elementary category accessorized design elementary, they took second place. Performing arts, solo, duo, trio vocalist was first place Jeremiah Locklear. Performing arts elementary, large group, they took home second place. Painting was fourth place, DeKyla Chestnut. Our premier performer elementary singer, first place Jeremiah Locklear. And the premier performer elementary singer, first place was Michaela Hines. For Union Elementary, in the elementary category, best of show elementary was first place Dean Bowen. For digitally enhanced photography elementary was fourth place, John Landon Sampson. Fiber optics, fiber arts elementary, third place was Kylie Todd. Performing arts elementary, solo, duo, trio vocalist, second place. We had the premier performer elementary singer, first place Hayden Locklear. Quilling Elementary, fourth place was Kayden Lowry. Recyclable art elementary, first place Dean Bowen. Service learning showcase elementary was third place. They also have a junior beta group and they had accessorized design junior, that was third place. Black and white photography junior, fifth place was Isabella Dial. She also had color photography, fifth place Isabella Dial. Jewelry junior, fourth place was Isabella Mayner. And mixed media junior, fourth place was Cash Swork. So, congratulations to Union. Pembroke Middle School, with their junior beta, we had computer science principal, sixth grade, fifth place was Sadaya Carter. Jewelry junior, third place was James Bullard. And recyclable art junior, fifth place Emily Oxendine. Prospect Elementary, with a junior beta, we had campaign skit junior state, fourth place, that was Misha Gabriella Hunt. Living literature junior, first place. Marking and communications junior, fifth place. And woodworking, second place Brayden Clark. South Robinson Middle, with their junior beta, we had vice president student officer, D'Artagnan Davis. We have campaign skit junior, third place, D'Artagnan Davis. Hand drawn junior, fourth place Carly Goins. Performing arts junior, solo, duo, trio vocalist, fourth place. Spanish sixth grade, second place Brenda Morales Varias. And premier performer junior singer, first place Josiah Curry. For Purnell Swin High School, in the senior beta category, we had campaign skit senior, they took home fifth place. Living literature senior, third place. And mixed media division two, fourth place Kirsten Scott. For the early college, we had digitally enhanced photography, division two, third place was Emma Scott. Drawing division one, second place was Marley Priggin. Jewelry division one, first place Navea Bullard. Marketing and communication senior, third place. Math grade nine, second place Zachary Zanny. On-site drawing division, third place Jalissa Locklear. Premier performer senior dancer, first place Isabella Floyd. Poetry division one, second place Vetica Zoep. Recyclable art division one, second place Urelly Medina Verana. Sculpture division one, fifth place Raymond Fountain. Social studies, 10th grade, fourth place John Hunt. Spanish ninth grade, third place Helen Perez Hernandez. Spanish 10th grade, second place Brian Diaz. Speech division one, fourth place Jamison Smith. And three-dimensional design senior, they took home fourth place. In St. Paul's High School, in the senior beta category, we had drawing division two, fourth place Sebastian Hernandez Arianas. So, congratulations to them. And we would just like to say a very, very special thank you to all of our beta sponsors. It is a lot of work and we appreciate what they do for our children every day, the experiences that they provide. Those are experiences that will last a lifetime, so we appreciate them. And once again, we'd like to congratulate all of our teams and all of our students. Thank you.
Ms. Melissa Ocean?
And just a quick statement, I was able, had the honor of attending this event and it is, it was a real experience. The kids are, they're awesome. They are awesome. Public schools of Robinson County really went and gave it their all. So, I just thank you for letting me be a part of that.
Definitely memorable for our students and the adults.
It was, I remember always.
Good.
Thank you. Now, we have the 2024-2025 Student of Excellence by Dr. Deborah Dallas and Ms. Valerie Hammond.
Okay. So, good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and Board members. We are excited to share in recognizing 12 amazing students this evening with several of our Chamber of Commerce organizations for our Student of Excellence celebration. We would like to thank all of our Chamber of Commerce members for supporting our students and for being here this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Valerie Hammond, our lead AIG teacher, to come forward and we will continue with our recognition. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and Board members. This evening, the public schools of Robinson County's academically intellectually gifted department, along with various Chamber of Commerce organizations, are honoring two students from each high school. Two applicants were chosen by each chamber organization as a student of excellence for the 2024-25 school year and each winner will receive an item of recognition based on the choice of each chamber group. So, everyone's already in order. What we're gonna do is we'll take pictures when you receive your item and then we'll also take a picture with the chamber member when those students are recognized. Okay. We will start with the Lumberton Chamber of Commerce representative, Mr. Tim Little, who will present the winners for Early College at RCC and Lumberton Senior High School.
Thank you Valerie, she said, my name's Tim Little, I'm representing the Lumberton Chamber of Commerce, I also work with Robinson County Partnership for Children. And I am honored this evening to be able to recognize these bright young people. First, from Early College, be recognizing Carlos Yumana Karanza, who's in the 13th grade. He has an unweighted GPA of 4.0, three outstanding accomplishment activities. During the last two years, he's been the captain for the robotics team, number 6,792 at Early College. He mentors other high school robotics teams across the county. He was a finalist at the 2024 UNC Pembroke District Event Robotics Competition. His future plans, after completing undergrad and graduate studies at UNC Chapel Hill, he plans to work in research concerning environmental issues. Are your parents here this evening? Congratulations. Congratulations. Next, from Early College. We have Kami Lo Sampson. Kami's in the 12th grade, she has an unweighted GPA of 4.0, three outstanding accomplishments/activities. She's a 2023 College Horizon Scholar and SA Award winner. She's a part of the Project Indy Choice Tutoring Consultants Program. She's maintained a 4.0 GPA while attending Early College and in the future, she plans to become a certified nurse midwife. Are your parents here tonight? Do I want to come up? Congratulations. From Lumberton High School. First, we have Leslie Soto Flores, a 12th grader. Leslie has an unweighted GPA 3.7. Her outstanding accomplishments and achievements are, she's a member of several school clubs and serves as the battalion commander of the junior reserve. She's team captain of the varsity cross-country team. She's participated in many community events through junior ROTC, beta and National Honor Society. She plans to become an officer in the Army with a major in business administration and human resources concentration. Are your parents here?
I wore heels today.
Congratulations. Finally, from Lumberton High School, we recognize Caitlin Foyle, who's in the 10th grade. Caitlin has an unweighted GPA of 4.0. Her outstanding achievements are, she's a member of several school clubs, the 10th grade ambassador for the Key Club. She's currently in her first, ranked first in her sophomore class. She's an elite level gymnast who's traveled extensively to compete and will be competing this month at the South Carolina State Championships. In the future, she plans to become an orthodontist and open her own practice. Are your parents here tonight? I thought I saw them. Y'all can move faster than that. Congratulations. Thank you.
Now, we will have the Fairmont Chamber of Commerce representative, Ms. Whitney Johnson, come forward to present the winners for Fairmont High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to pronounce these awards for the Fairmont High School from the Chamber of Commerce. Our first recipient will be Ms. Halana Locklear from the 9th grade. She has a 4.0 GPA. She's the Beta Club Vice President and has been a member since 5th grade. She's the Beta Club Vice President and has been a member since 5th grade. She's a junior Ms. Fairmont Farmers Festival Queen, and she volunteers for the Fairmont Rotary Club Auction each year. Her future plans are to attend college to become a pediatrician. Mom, where are you? Come on, Dr. Barton. Our next recipient couldn't be with us tonight. That's Ms. Jordan Hunt from the 11th grade. She has an unweighted GPA of 3.6. She's the president of the Robinson County Teens Democrats Youth Advocacy Council with NC Children. She discusses youth mental health with people her own age. She's a Robinson STEM Ambassador. Her future plans are to attend UNC Chapel Hill or the University of Southern California, then attend law school. And Dr. Barton will be accepting her award for her tonight. Thank you.
Now, we will have the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce representative, Ms. Carol Richardson, come forward to present the winners for Purnell Swett High School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much Valerie. I'm Carol Richardson, Vice President of the Pembroke Area Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Pembroke Chamber and in the absence of our President Pastor Strickland, we would like to thank you for this opportunity. Our first recipient is Lindsay Locklear, 12th grade from Purnell Swett High School. GPA 4.0, three outstanding accomplishments. She has been an active member of Beta Club for eight years and served as a junior marshal. She has been playing tennis for three years. She volunteers at various local school and church events. Future plans, attend the University of North Carolina at Pembroke, earning a bachelor's degree in biology. Do you, are your parents here?
Our next recipient is Gabriel Chavis, 11th grade. Sorry. Our next recipient is Gabriel Chavis, 11th grade at Purnell Swett. Unweighted GPA 4.0, three outstanding accomplishments. He has been an active member of Beta Club for four years. He has been a member of the National Honor Society for two years. He volunteers at Southeastern Veterinary Hospital every Thursday and volunteers at his home church every other event. Future plans, attend North Carolina State University, obtaining an undergraduate degree in pet vet, later attending North Carolina State College of Veterinary Medicine, earning a doctorate degree in veterinary medicine. Congratulations. Is your parents here? Thank you, guys.
Now, we will have the Red Springs Chamber of Commerce representative, Mr. Chris Locklear, come forward to present the winners for Red Springs High School.
Thank you, everyone. My name's Chris Locklear. I'm President of Red Springs Chamber of Commerce. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for having us. I'm glad to acknowledge all the students here tonight. And so first, we have Ms. Elena Oxendine. She's in the 12th grade. I think Ms. Elena's unable to be here with us this evening, but we have someone to stand in for. So she has an unweighted GPA of 4.0, three outstanding accomplishments activities. She's a junior chief marshal in 2024. Received Superintendent's Academic Award in 2022, 2023, 2024 for straight A's. Achieved All-Conference in Soccer in 2023-24. And her future plans attends to, she plans to attend college to become a teacher. And for our next, our next student, Mr. Noah Caden. Noah's in the 11th grade. And has an unweighted GPA 3.14, three outstanding accomplishments activities. Certified in Fire Operations 7, Search and Rescue with the Red Springs Fire Department. President of National Technical Honor Society. Battalion Staff in Junior ROTC. And future plans, he attends, he plans to attend Greensboro College for Fire Safety Degree and do a cross-enrollment at UNC Greensboro for Navy ROTC, then become a Navy helicopter pilot. And, uh, your parents, family here? Congratulations.
Our final presentation will be from the St. Paul's Chamber of Commerce representative, Ms. Doris McLean, who will present the winners for St. Paul's High School.
Chairman Leach, Board members and esteemed guests. My name's Doris McLean, and I'm Vice President of the St. Paul's Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of our President Libby Ferguson, who couldn't be here tonight, we want to thank you for allowing us to be a part of this ceremony. Our first award will go to Janet Higman. She has a GPA of 3.9. She has been on the AV Honor Roll from elementary all the way through high school. She has served as vice captain on the middle school volleyball team. She has done volunteer work at helping the Orphans Thrift Store and ran a marathon for breast cancer. She plans to attend college in Indiana while pursuing a master's degree in psychology to become a mental health therapist. She would also like to travel to Australia to experience some of the spectacular attractions it has to offer. Is, have family members? Our second award goes to Jenna Altman. She has a 3.0. She was elected a Future Farmers American Officer in 10th grade. She's volunteered at the hospital for two years in a row. She also volunteers with different organizations in order to distribute food to those in need. She's also an ambassador to the St. Paul's Chamber of Commerce. She is instrumental in helping us with our parade and our banquet and anything else we ask. She plans to attend Robinson Community College for their two-year program to become an honor college nurse. Jenna has a fan club here tonight, so I don't know if we can get them all up here. So, all this section over here, if you'll stand up. And this is her mom and dad, so. And we also have our principal, who we're very proud of, Jason Sars. Yes, I do.
Congratulations.
The high school AIG specialists would like to thank each Chamber of Commerce organization for their time and cooperation in this endeavor to honor these students. And also Dr. Williamson, Dr. Carr, Dr. Dallas and our esteemed board members for the opportunity to present this evening. Thank you.
Please join me once again in saying congratulations to all of our recipients tonight. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you. Also, thank you to the local area Chamber of Commerce for your support of our students. We appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Now, we had the Yonder Pouch reference by Dr. Freddie Williamson and Ms. Jessica Sealy.
Mr. Chairman and members, last month, we introduced to you two bills that would restrict cell phones use in public schools. Our intent, as we share the information, is not to take cell phones away from students, but to have the capability of locking those phones up and the students would keep the phones on their person during the school day. What you have in your package is letters of reference from those school districts that are currently using the Yonder Pouch, their recommendations. And again, it's just for your information for tonight. Hopefully, maybe in the April Board Meeting, we can have it on again for information. But again, the first step that we shared with you was that we would provide you with letters of references from users. We also have from the superintendent in Chatham County Schools, Dr. Tony Jackson. He sent us this virtual video reference.
Hello, this is Anthony Jackson. I'm the superintendent in Chatham County Schools. It's my joy to share with you our journey with Yonder and the use of Yonder Pouch. It has been a transformative tool for us. We're excited about what it has meant for instruction in our schools, for engagement for our students, and most of all, giving our classrooms back to our teachers. It has been an amazing turnaround from the beginning of the year to now to see the reduction in discipline referrals, the increase in the number of kids passing their classes at the pilot schools, and the reduction in suspensions in our schools, the reduction in fights. Now, we can't tie it all to Yonder, but we can say that we believe that it's part of our toolkit that has made doing this worthwhile and meaningful for our schools. So if you're planning to use it, we strongly recommend that you give it a strong look as a tool to help manage the use of cell phones and that it can in fact be a great toolkit to also helping increase engagement for students and potentially elevating their academic performance. We strongly recommend it. Thank you. I hope this helps.
You also made a request of us that we research other companies, and we've done that. And Jessica will share with you what she's found.
So, it's, we're kind of in a situation where it's not as popular right now to find a bunch of companies, but one that we have found is Velcro. And I can provide that for you this evening, as far as quotes. But this one is far above the rest, Yonder is. And did you tell them about the recommendation? Okay. I'll take any questions?
Mr. Terry?
If this bill passes, is there a mandate or a requirement in that bill that we actually purchase something? Or are there other options other than purchasing, purchasing something like this which would cause, which would cost a good amount of money? And it's my understanding that as it stands, this is a unfunded bill?
That, that is correct. And as I have read both bills, what their intent is to pass the bill, and then it becomes the obligation of school systems to make that a practice, to do that. And this method, while it will be a one-time cost, we think is the best way to secure students' phones, leave it on their person, and then in the case of an emergency, they will have the phone on them, rather than collect those phones and put them in some type of item as a whole group. But it's up to us in terms of how we implement.
Is there any timeline on when it may be passed and signed by the governor?
No, you know, those bills normally say it becomes law when passed and signed, so we're not sure.
Mr. Trey Britt?
That's what I was gonna say, what Dr. Williamson said. I was looking this afternoon, and there is actually one in the House and the Senate right now, I believe. And I don't think it's been fully out. My thing is, I think, my personal opinion is wait and see what happens with the General Assembly and then move forward from there. And I actually, I think it was Gordon, which is actually a personal friend of mine, who is a product of Robinson Public Schools of Robinson County. He said, I think they pilot at a couple of schools first. And I like the idea, I think, definitely think we need to do something eventually. But I like the idea of pilot instead of just going full blast all the high schools.
Mr. Craig Lowry?
So, Dr. Williamson, if you know, the bills that are up front now, if they're passed, are they saying cell phones are banned? How is it worded?
That's a great question. The wording is they're banned for use during the instructional day. That's the language.
And so what you're looking at, or what we're looking at here, is with the company Yonder, the students would actually keep the phone in their possession during the day?
That's correct. They'd be locked in that pouch that they cannot unlock it.
Okay. Well, I'm just gonna say, you know, going forward, reading these different items that we had, there was different methods on how they dealt with the phones. For students locking them up, keeping them, or they being put in one place. So if we pilot it somewhere, or however we go forth with it, if it's approved at a later time, that we have a clear pathway of what we're gonna do, so that once it's put out there, that we're not having knee-jerk reactions because we did this and it didn't work. I know that could always happen. But it would be nice to have, okay, this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing, this is how we're gonna pass them out, take them up, whatever happens with pouches or if it's something else.
That's correct. That's one of the pieces that led us to look at Yonder and that we want to be able to have the same practice in every building in the district as a whole, rather than allow individual schools to make a decision of how to implement those policies. That's why.
But again, this time, we're kind of waiting to see what the legislature does.
That's correct. Again, just for information, and as the bills move through the General Assembly... Again, just for information, and as the bills move through the General Assembly, we'll pick it up again on the conversation.
All right.
And I'll add to it. The other vendor that I looked at that was kind of comparable still, like it does, it blocks the cellphone, but it's Velcro. So it's not as secure as this Yonder system would be. Yonder would give more control. And they also offer medical pouches, which would just be readily available for students that might have medical needs. So those will not be locked. And I know that might be a concern for parents who know more about Yonder. But anyway, and they have a wonderful communications team, and they would help us, help guide us through every step of the way. So wonderful packet, wonderful package. We hope you'll consider.
Mr. Kirstel Monroe?
I just, I've been to a comedy show where they have them, where you have to turn them in, your phone when you go in. And they have like the lock, kind of almost like your clothing that they take off. So is that how they, these are?
Right.
It's kind of magnetic.
Yes.
So the magnetic.
And they have, they have the mechanism that unlocks those.
So, okay.
All right. That's it. All right. Thank you. Now we will have the North Carolina High School Athletic Association realignment by Mr. Glenn Patterson.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and board members. Every four years, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Realignment Committee gather, they collect the ADMs from every member school, which is the first, it's the attendance for the first 20 days of the school, calendar school year. And once they collect this data, they determine then which athletic conference that each school, each member school will participate in. So on March the 3rd, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Realignment Committee heard final request considered of conference placement in the realignment plan. Afterwards, the overall realignment plan for 2025 through 2029 was approved. And up on your screen, you also have a copy in your packet, but up on the screen, these are the five Robinson County school conferences that they were placed in. As you have the 3A, 4A, 5A Conference, which consists of Fairmont, Red Springs, South Columbus, West Bladen, Whittville, and South Brunswick. In the 5A, 6A Conference, you have Douglasburg, St. Paul's, E. Smith, 71st, Southview, and Westover. And rounding out the 6A, 7A Conference is Graves Creek, Scotland County, Terry Sanford, Cape Fear, Lumberton, and Purnell Swift. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glenn. There are public comments. There are none. Hello, hello, Mr. Bobby. You got one information item? All right. Mr. Schwartz got one information item before we?
The, this is new information. The U.S. Department of Education, just a short while ago, late this afternoon, announced that it's going to be closed tomorrow and will reopen Thursday after they have fired 1,315 employees at the U.S. Department of Education today. The U.S. Department of Education started the year with 4,133 employees. 572 of them took the voluntary separation package that was offered by the Trump administration. 63 probationary employees were terminated in February, and 1,315 were fired today. So that reduces the Department of Education to about half the size of, that it was in January, with no information about how various functions are going to be realigned or what the impact is going to be on local school systems.
All right. Now we have action items by Mr. 2025-26 School Calendar by Mr. Bobby Lotler.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, board members. So bring before you the, our suggestion for the calendar for the 25-26 school year and just to highlight the school calendar law. Again, this is, we must start, students must start school Monday the closest to August 26th and dismissed by Friday closest to June 11th. There are no educational waivers or weather waivers at this point in the state of North Carolina for any school calendar. All calendars, in order to adjust the time in school, all schools must be closed within the calendar or delayed starts. We must cover a minimum of nine months. And this is where the flexibility that we do have within the calendar is that we must have a minimum of 185 student days or 1,025 hours of instruction. Must have nine teacher work days, two days that teachers can work off or take off, I'm sorry, and have a minimum of 10 annual leave days. We follow the equivalent number of days that the State Personnel Commission designates as state holidays. So this is typically where we have questions as to why some state agencies have Good Friday off and we do not. Is we play with that Good Friday day to try to complete two whole weeks at Christmas? Because we've heard that's very key. That's a large want across the district. So schools can't be held on Sunday, and we must have, we must take Veterans Day off. So again, bring before you the calendar that we are suggesting or requesting that students begin on August 25th. The last day for students would be June 9th. So if you look at the box at the bottom, we have a total of 177 student days. We have 11 holidays, 10 annual leave days, and 17 teacher work days, which gives us a grand total of 215 days. So again, when we build the calendar, we build it with a couple of parameters in mind. One first is the students in terms of having the 185 days or 1,025 hours. Then next, we must have a calendar that teachers get paid for working 215 days, whether those are student days, teacher work days, annual leave days, or holidays.
All right. Mrs. Trey Britt?
Mr. Bobby, what's different from this calendar last month?
There is no difference in this one than the one we presented last month.
Okay. Well, we voted no to the one of last month. That's my understanding. My question is this then, why was there not any discussion with board members that voted no since we majority voted no on this calendar? That's my question.
Right. So during the time, we did have conversations with school leaders, especially high school leaders, because they would be the ones that were most affected by this and the outcomes of the test scores at their school. So we did reach out to school leaders.
School leaders as in principals?
Principals, yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, Mr. Schwartz. Policy 3300 states that the local school board will establish the school calendar.
That's correct.
So it's up to us 11 to establish the school calendar. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So this is just a suggestion of what you're saying?
The, both the statute and the board policy require that the board shall adopt. That's the language in the statute. Language in the policy is will establish a school calendar that meets certain requirements that are set forth in the statute. And the only restriction on that statutory requirement, besides complying with the start dates, end dates, and that sort of thing, is that local boards of education shall conduct with, shall consult with parents and the employed public school personnel in the development of the school calendar.
Let me ask you another question.
And that's usually done through a committee and a process established through the administration.
Understand, but 3300, the first sentence says the local school board will establish it. But now, my question is this. If somebody's at your law firm and brought something to you, you said no to it, and then in return, they bring the same thing right back to you again, how would you feel?
Would depend on the situation, and I would ask them what their rationale was.
That's my exact reason. And then in return, we've had a whole month go by and nobody has reached out unless somebody mistaken about this calendar. Who passed this calendar out right here? I'm gonna go ahead and tell you now and colleagues see it. The Facebook post I put out, I did it for a purpose because I wanted to show people that the teachers, I've checked, I ain't found one except being inside this building where people want exams after Christmas. I checked with students, students as well, parents, the same exact thing. Now, my thing is this. Am I wrong with Mr. Schwartz in saying that it's the school board decides the calendar?
The school board has to decide the calendar, yes.
Mr. Schwartz also says in that policy now that the board has to vote on elements submitted by the superintendent as part of it, correct?
I'm gonna need proof to say that because I don't see that. And that says principals in there, I see. But I see the first sentence states the local school board establishes school calendar, which is us 11, well, the ones that are here tonight, establishes it. Now, my thing is, we can sit here and do nothing if you want to, and we are in the situation that is with teachers. Or we can actually do something that the teachers actually want. And let's tell the truth even more. I've got people within this building that work here every day that have reached out to me one-on-one and said, Trey, you're right. But now I'm asking this board, what do y'all want to do? If y'all want to go with it, it's fine. And my vote's no to it. And I'm being upfront, telling y'all, it's no because it's not what the people want. In 2019 and 20, we went to that calendar that I mentioned of, which is the same exact start dates. It's nothing about the closest to the 26th or whatever the law states, but exams were before Christmas. And in return, I understand the study has been done of exams before, exams after, there's no real difference. But now my question is, what about inclement weather? Because we have more inclement weather, I believe, in January than we do in December. And you've already got the two weeks and a half that they're out for Christmas prayer.
All right, Mr. Terry had his hand up for a while, then we get back to you, Dr. Williamson, sorry.
Yeah, so I took it upon myself to go do some research in this calendar that I'm proposing, this alternative checks all the boxes with a largest employer in the county. You can look at your personnel packet tonight and look at, look at what's going on. We've got almost 30 people leaving and 20 coming in, and of the 20, and there's, there's nobody retiring. The biggest chunk of the people that are leaving this system, the teachers that are leaving this system, are going to teach in another system. We used to hear in the past that, well, they're having retention problems everywhere, and that's probably true. But if they're having retention problems everywhere, we're having them three times as worse because you got people, you got teachers leaving this county and going to teach for other districts. So our teachers need to feel like they're being listened to, they're being heard, and this board is responding to their needs. And of the, of the 20, we're hiring 20 people tonight. And of the 20 people we're hiring, only 20 of them from the United States. I don't have anything against these international individuals coming in, but look at what Mr. Schwartz just said. These individuals are on what they call, they're on J-1 visas. And with these J-1 visas, you know what's going on in Washington with a stroke of a pen. That could, that could put those individuals in jeopardy. Our teachers need to be heard. This board needs to respond to them. There's, for the past several years, from that podium, there's been discussion about this calendar. And they say, research says that, research says that they do better if they take tests in January. Test scores are better, but I hadn't seen a thing. I haven't seen a report, a chart, any study or anything. I conducted my own research for this. I'm a data-driven individual. And the research that I conducted, it was unanimous. Teachers want to change. They want to know that we're, that they're being listened to, and this is a way for us to do it.
All right, Dr. Williamson.
I want, I want to be clear. I'd rather test before Christmas. I'm not saying I don't want, so I want to be clear on that piece. And then we never said that, what we said was testing at Christmas or in January. There's basically no difference in the outcomes. That's what we said. So the only question on the table, and we can frame it around what I employ teachers want, and we support teachers 100%. But we, our job is to do what's in the best interest of our students. That's our job, our primary job. Now, you'll never convince me that an 80-day semester versus a 100-day semester is in the best interest of any child. So we're gonna deny 20 days of instruction or to a group of kids or 10 days of instruction? We can't afford to do that. They have a right, and the demand is that we be as equitable in what we do as possible. Again, I'm not against testing before Christmas. I realize there's no way to do it, that we don't create an imbalance and/or ask this board to violate the calendar law. The issue is not our debate. The issue is the problem with the calendar law. We need to ask the General Assembly to make that a local decision as has been in the past.
Mr. Craig, Mr. Craig?
Thank you. Dr. Williamson, I wished I could have spoken before you. Mr. Bobby, are we still obligated to when we can start school, like August the 25th or something? What is that start date for students?
Yes, sir. That is still the law, the Monday closest to August 25th.
We can't back it up and start August the 15th. Okay. Folks, I just cannot. Now, I understand what we say teachers want and students want, and I did some checking too. But, and I heard some of both. But I cannot see why you want to let, do a semester, first semester, and they be 70 days in, and this kid takes Math 1 for 70 days, and then the second semester, a kid takes Math 1 for 100 days. There's just something wrong with that picture in my mind, and it's gonna stay there. So, Mr. Britt, you said you wouldn't vote for this one. I wouldn't vote for the other. And I'll say one more thing. These things ought to be decided in this boardroom instead of Facebook, and I'll leave that at that. I think that's fair. But I'm good with a calendar that's even, that's got, you know, close to the 90 days in each semester. And I'm not gonna sit here and vote for a calendar if it's a possibility it breaks the law. Now, I don't think it might break it because they say we're gonna go ahead and start when we normally start. We just gonna end up with like, what is it, 79 or 80 days first semester and 100 days second semester? And I just don't see where that is being fur to students. I just, you can't convince me where that's fur to a student. And I'm not being ugly when I say this with teachers, but, you know, I look at doing this with the student. Now, let me go back if I didn't say it. I think we should test before Christmas, but I just can't vote for it when our calendar law says when we can start. If we could start August 11th, where we get in our 90 days, fine. Let's test before Christmas because we know, how many kids are gonna study during Christmas holiday? Probably the same amount I did, none. I'll be honest about it. In cases we don't, they don't, and that's a known fact. But again, my problem is with the time that kids will lose if we test before Christmas. And I don't, if you can convince me how we can get around that, then I would support something different.
We got Mr. Bradley Phillips, got his hand raised. I mute yourself, Bradley. Well, we'll go to Ms. Kirstel Monroe, then we're gonna come to you, Mr. Trey. I'm sorry.
So my question is, is, of course, I don't want to break any laws or have to, but when I'm counting, unless I'm counting wrong, and I, I pulled up Cumberland County's schedule because theirs is pretty much lined up. They start on the 25th, they get out at the end of May, kind of the, and they do their testing before. So when I was counting the days per semester, they're pretty much very similar. Like I have, now I may be counting wrong, so that's why I want to know. But like when I'm counting between ours and theirs, it's like 36, 42-ish between each semester. There's not really a big gap of this 80. a big gap of this eighty and hundred, so I'm just trying to see where that's at, that's at. Too, if that's even, if that is a thing, because from what I'm counting, if I, and I could be counting wrong, there's not a big difference between the semesters.
So Chairman Leach, may I add to this conversation? So as the one that has stood here for twenty years presenting the calendars, I need to give all the information as the work we've done. We have been lucky the last three or four years not to deal with hurricanes in the first semester. And so the years that we have dealt with hurricanes in the first semester, it has pushed us back into February testing. So anytime we, anytime we uh end the semester prior to Christmas and we lose a day, two days, three days because of a hurricane, uh, we're, we're risking those children's opportunity to have instructional time in there. Now, yes, we can push it back, but then we're right back where we were today. But also looking at this calendar that was passed out, just to remind you, any day that a student is not sitting in the building, cafeterias and bus drivers lose money. So if you look at this, there are twenty-seven teacher workdays, cafeteria and bus drivers do not work on twenties, on teacher workdays. So there are ten days that those folks would go without pay compared to this calendar.
All right.
I, I'm, I'm good to go now. You need, hear me, Chairman.
Yes, Bradley Phillips, you are.
So I, I've asked um Central Office about um pay. That if we simply change how we test, does it affect cafeteria workers and does it affect bus drivers? And in an email I was told enough. And every time we discuss this, or it's been discussed, it goes from seventy instructional days to eighty instructional days to the first semester. Well, when we come back after Christmas, we're losing eight days, ain't, nobody's learning anything. In my mind, that's not even an instructional day. That's, that's reviewing to pass a test that we just set the whole semester through to pass. And that, that's not, I don't, that's not doing what the teachers want, what the teachers need, and I don't feel like it's fair for the children. I've had so many discussions about this, I ain't had a single person, now I've truly looked for a single person to tell me that this is not in the best interest, and I haven't. I mean, we went circles and circles around on this, and it was obvious that the reason why this was voted down last board meeting, and then we get presented the same you, calendar again with the same, you know, discussions about it again, and it, it just seems like a slap in the face.
Mr. Trey Britt.
Terry, where'd you get this calendar from? And I, and I guess part of my thing is, is the principal involved in this too, because at the same exact time, there's been a month went by, and not a, nobody has discussed this thing. Nobody, but now here's the thing, two thousand nineteen and twenty was the last time exams were before Christmas. And I know there's someone, and there's been somewhere in this building and voted for it. But now at the same exact time, I've thought about it, I've looked at it, but when I was growing up, when my daddy said no, it meant no. But to bring it back again, it's like Bradley said, it's a slap in the face. And I'm more ticked off about it more than anything because there's board members on here that are being ignored, and at the end of the day, does this central office work for us or do we work for them? Because it's been placed in front of us and we're supposed to automatically say yes to it? It's something we need to discuss because, like he said, it's up to this local school board, what are we gonna do?
Um, we got Dr. Manuel. Yes.
Oh. I will not repeat Mr. Craig's speech and Dr. Williamson's speech because I feel the same, and I guess it's because I've worked in education. I do want to ask you, Mr. Trey and Mr. Bradley, how would the teachers feel to extend the school day the first semester to make up for those days missed? How would they feel like, for example, if they're missing three or four days, ever how many days, Bobby, the first semester, if we got out before Christmas and took the exams, how many days is it off the first semester?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a quick count, and I could be wrong, but looking at what was just handed out, there's a difference of about seven or eight days between the two semesters, and that's just a quick count.
Okay, thank you so much, Bobby. Let's say, and this is just me thinking out loud. If we extended the school day, they had the state of four, four fifteen every day, to make up for those seven days so we could get out before Christmas, how would they feel about that? That's just me thinking out loud, to make up for those days, extend the school day. What would be their feelings on that? I'm asking you, Trey, since you.
All right, let's go.
But it's like I said, Dr. Manuel, my problem is, there's been a whole month go by, and there was no discussion on this whole issue. We could have ironed all this out here beforehand, but there was no discussion. Now, there we go again, but the teachers have no input in this, so why are we asking, do we want to extend the workdays or whatever, when principals are the ones in whatever committee is basically being, the ones putting this together?
Wait, okay, well, let, I guess let me finish. I, I appreciate the passion that you have, but I have to agree that the school calendar is made for the students. And I appreciate the teachers, I understand where they're coming from, I understand that they want to test before Christmas. But the calendar is student-oriented for the students, and I, I have to support that, and and you have a right to vote how you feel, you have a right to be passionate, I, I, I respect that. But please respect us too that agree that the students need that amount of time as well.
Dr. Manuel, like I told you, I went to high school students, because this is mainly what it is with exams, I have not found a one that said they wanted exams after. And I'm at Lumberton High School with a various number of students, a lot.
We has, we had some good dialogue about the calendar, about this, um let's go ahead and bring it to a vote and let's see where we at. Mr. Terry, we want to bring this to a vote.
You need a motion.
Anybody, anybody making a motion to accept a school calendar? Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we um approve the alternative calendar that was handed out.
I'll second Terry's motion.
Point of order, please.
Yes, Kristy Fields. Um, a motion is on the floor by Mr. Terry Lotler, is, uh, self, um, he said, he made a mo, a secondary motion to accept the uh turn of calendar he sent out, uh seconded by me by Ms. uh Kristy Fields. Yes, okay, uh discussion. Yes, I just put you on.
Okay, make sure I know what I'm doing. This calendar here was presented by, and Bobby clarified, this is a new calendar we just got tonight, is that correct?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Is this new?
I, I have not seen that.
Mr. Terry, this the calendar Mr. Terry uh passed out.
So, that you all, nobody had input, Mr. Terry, where did this come from? Wait a minute now, and so you're asking us to approve this calendar, and we just got it? Wait a minute. But this didn't go before our committee, our committee here at the board, that you have your calendar committee. And in all due respect, it should go before that calendar committee, and it should be one of the options for them to look at, I mean, in my opinion. That's just so.
Mr. Dr. Williamson? All right. Um, Mrs. Mrs. John Simmons?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we um table this calendar and call a special meeting, that way we can discuss it more.
All right, uh, all of, so John made a secondary motion. Substitute motion, no, the substitute motion goes first. Yes, su- substitute motion going first. So a substitute motion be obeyed by Mr. John Simmons, let's table the, the calendar, um the current, the current calendar for more discussions, and it'll be the second be obeyed by Mrs. Trey Britt. All right, discussion.
Law states this has to do by April the first, right, the D P I?
No, our um po, uh, our policy states, no later than the April board member will approve a calendar for the next school year. There's not a law that dictates when the calendar has to be approved.
All right, I'll, I'm, all right, Mr. Craig.
So I'm assuming, wrong word, that if we're gonna have a meeting, that we will compare teacher workdays, holidays, and all between these two calendars to make sure they're in there and where they're supposed to be. I think, Mr. Terry, did you say this was seven days less on the day thing? Seven days, okay, then my question, and I couldn't have voted on it neither. Not seeing it because I got to know that, okay, do we have the teacher workdays in, do we have the holidays in, do we have all those days in that we need to have here for the staff? And do we have what's required, like the Veterans Day, you know, there's, there's nothing around that, Veterans Day is whenever it is. And so if we're gonna look at all of that, then you know, I'm fine with at least looking at it, um and then bringing it back before whenever it's got to come back.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine doing the same.
So we got a secondary motion on the table, it's been um, it's been seconded by Mrs. Trey Britt, that, that we take another look at this calendar and decide, decide on have more discussions, all in favor?
The motion was that this be tableed in a special meeting held to address this.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, point of clarification, and, and so if we have that meeting, I want to clarify who's gonna be a part of that, so it's a conversation that it would be the board and central service staff that would sit down and have that conversation. I want to be clear on that, otherwise we know what's gonna happen.
It'd be a special board meeting, just like a regular board meeting, uh just for this limited purpose and anything else that the board decides to add.
Well, we're talking about a work session, not a board meeting.
No, the, the motion was for a special board meeting. The mo, the, the motion was that this, that this be tabled in a special board meeting held to address it.
So I was thinking that, the request was that we would have a work session to work through all of this, and then whatever's decided from that group comes back in April as the calendar, we ask the board rather than a debate in them.
I can work like that. Um. Make a subs, make a substitute motion to have a, a work study done for the calendar, uh with the board and the calendar committee.
We already had the first and the second on the first one, right?
I'm changing mine. We, I'm still making the second substitute motion, but I'm just changing some wording in it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, uh.
Mr. Simmons, are you, are you trying to amend your substitute motion to table this and have a work session? Special work, special board meeting is a work session to discuss this?
Yeah.
So you amend this motion.
So we need a second on that.
All right.
Or, or if, if Trey will, Trey, would you agree to that, uh, to that amendment to the motion you seconded? Okay, then, then that'll be an amendment to the motion by Mr. Simmons, approved by the person who seconded it, Mr. Britt. That, that the board will be, will table this and have a special board meeting work session to address it.
All right, there's, Mrs. John has amended his motion to have a um special uh work session, special board meet, work session so we can further discuss the calendar and the calendar days, and it's been um seconded by Mrs. Trey Britt. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, ayes got it, unanimous. All right.
I think I was muted, I, I had a aye as well.
I'm s, I'm sorry. All right, Mr. Craig, we, we move on from the calendar, one more comment.
Just, my only comment's not about that. Okay, if, uh, so we send this as a board, we're gonna do that together, can we decide right now on a date? Instead of throwing the date out or, or we talk about it and decide one at the end, if when we leave here tonight, we got a date.
Yes, we, we, yes, we'll look at it, we'll look at it before the night come up, before the night's over with, I will come up a couple of days that we can have. All right. Next on the agenda is the lawn, um, lawn contracts, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, by Mr. Bobby Lotler.
Yes, so included in your, I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, board members, say we advertised, it was time for us to advertise again for our lawn care services. Uh, we have grouped our schools into six different groups, uh, we advertised um the request for proposal on our website, also in our local, uh, local paper, and so I have given you what um what we're asking, or the companies we're asking you to approve, uh, to complete that lawn care service for twenty-five, twenty-six or twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And so just to walk through these, Group A, Gator, Gator um worked with us last year with those same sets of schools. Group B, Bethay's Lawn Care, again, worked with us last year with that same group of schools. Group C, but they also worked with those same groups of school last year. The next two are two new individuals, and I have checked their reference list, uh, as, as well as reached out and checked their equipment list. Group D, we're asking Freeman's Landscaping, Group E, Scott's Family Landscaping, and again, we worked with Gator last year on Group F.
All right, Mr. Bradley Phillips got a question?
So on this, on this, the list that's proposed the way it is with uh recommendations, what, what drove to these recommendations? Were these the lowest bids or?
There are. There are three different, three different categories that we looked at here. One, of course, was the law, and the response, Lloyd's, responsive and responsible. So the re, responsive would be, they, they fully complied with the R F P, and so some of the companies, excuse me, um, you could just tell that they did not go out and look at the law because it was the same price for everyone, it might be six hundred, six hundred, six hundred for every one of the law. And there's just very, within this. Other companies I reached out to just request because, request that they had walked the site so that they visually put their eyes on. They had not, and again, that was highly recommended within the R F P, because just looking at the Google site of these schools is not gonna allow you to see all the property there. And the last one would be responsible, and that is where we have a good relationship with the.
Cause it's from my, cause it's from my understanding, Group A, B, C, D, and F, another vendor was way cheap, I mean, almost a hundred thousand dollars cheaper. And is a credible landscape service as well, in my understanding.
Mr. Bo, Mr. Bobby, you wanna um?
Yes, so, so that, so going back to that, again, there were, there were issues where had the property been walked, and it was, uh, and also there was such a discrepancy. And again, and I've done this with other ones as well, there's such a discrepancy in the price that I know but not that, look at the property. And again, just if you're looking at something on Google map or looking at the G I S, you are not gonna get a full picture of the work that needs to be done. And also for of some of the vendors turning in that they would sub, subcontract.
Okay, and I, I don't think that's the case with, with this group as far as, as far as subcontracting either. But um, yeah, I feel like if, if there's someone that, that is that considerably cheaper, and it's a, you know, a legit company, and they're insured and bonded to abide by a contract that, that we're setting in place, you know, we should at least give them a, a. you know, we should at least give them a, a chance on a few to, you know, to prove theirself. I mean, that's a considerable amount of money that we're not willing to make a change on. Just my opinion.
All right, Mr. Craig, then we're gonna have Mr. Ms. Kristy Fields.
Uh, Mr. Bobby, one of the issues we've had has been, um, in various places. Uh, weed eating, um, what do you spray, uh, like around fences? Or do you weed eat it, uh, edging around campuses? Uh, things like that, besides just cutting grass. Now, is that totally explained in the contracts that these folks have? And there, what kind of communication is there for that? Because I know there were some situations by last August around some of the athletic fields, uh, at the middle school campuses. The grass was so high, if you sprayed it, it was just gonna fall over and be dead there on top. So, but is there things in place for all that to be taken care of?
Yes, so within the, within the RFP that was placed out, weed eating was described, trimming, in, in another term, was laid out in there. And also prior to executing any contract, then it is our recommendation that these individuals have a conversation with the principal. If, if they need to extend that conversation after walking the properties to ensure what needs to be done. And we've also implemented last year a sign-off list per, a sign-off per cut that the principal agrees that the work's been done to satisfaction.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kristy, uh, Fields?
So some of the complaints that I have is that they are mowing the grass when students are outside. How are we making sure that that's not going on?
That is a co- it, within the contract, it does say that the vendor or contractor can develop a schedule with the principal. So that would just be a conversation we need to have with the principal.
All right, Ms. Melissa Ocean, then Ms. Ms. Trey. Okay. Ms. Trey?
It'd only be right for me to say this because I was a coach in this county for ten years, but we gotta keep in mind too, and I'm just throwing it out there that way I can say that I didn't have a clear conscience. But we got coaches that cut fields numerous times and they're getting paid the same thing. It is, at some point, we have got to look at this and help these coaches out. And I know there's probably some coaches that agree with me, a hundred and twenty percent, probably all of them do.
All right, Ms. Melissa?
Make a motion that we accept the lawn services award proposals as presented by Mr. Bobby.
Uh, motion's on the floor to accept the, the lawn, uh, motion by Mr. Melissa Ocean to accept the lawn care contracts as presented by Mr. Bobby, a second being made by Mr. Craig Lowry. All in favor? Uh, can we go by the show of hands? All in favor? All opposed? As, as.
I'll put it here.
All right, so we have two, did you oppose?
Uh, we have two opposed.
Okay.
And, and six, I'm, I stepped.
Okay, so eight in favor, two opposed.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I said the wrong thing.
That was Mr. Lotley and, uh, and Mr. Phillips.
Yep, Mr. White Lamb, Mr. Phillips. All right. The audit year in June twenty twenty-four by Mr. Erica Setser and Mr. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Capital Outlay Projects by Mr. Bobby Lotley and Ms. Erica Setser, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, thank, um, thank you again, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, board members. So, uh, Cap, uh, Construction and Finance Committee met last night and approved our list of, uh, capital outlay projects for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So I will walk back through those. So, uh, the proposed projects at this point are to replace the roof at Purnell Sweat Auxiliary Gym, replace the roof at Parkton Gym, replace the roof at Union Chapel Pre-K Building, which was the old cafeteria. I E A received the grant several years ago, and they have continued to see, receive additional funding. Uh, so now they have a funding for a walkway, but do not have the funding to complete, uh, two handicap parking and some, uh, sidewalk there. So we're proposing that that's gonna cost about fifteen thousand dollars. The other is, we've all made everyone aware, the, uh, potential work that needs to take place at our high schools based on a recent C T E audit. And so within that, um, we are projecting approximately a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to replace the bleachers at Fairmount High, Red Springs High, St. Paul's High. But as we get into this work, uh, because we, our folks are still working on the C T E stuff, that if it looks like some items are gonna cost more or we hit a snag of some sort, then we would start with Red Springs High because those are the sets of bleachers that are in the most need of replacing. So that gives us a grand total at this point of one million seventy-two thousand dollars. And again, that's all projected. If you know how capital outlay projects have worked over the last few years, some have gone way under and some have gone way on over. So again, that's where we're at at this point. The Construction Finance Committee also included a list of twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, school request projects. So as we, uh, begin to check off items in the approved list above, we will begin to move here and see if it is feasible to address some of these other concerns because Ms. Erica has allotted us approximately two million dollars for capital outlay projects. So we have about a million to play with, uh, to tackle some of these other things. And we will have our maintenance department to walk through these and prioritize these as, uh, from most needed on down. And I also included for you, just for your, uh, just for your information, again, additional capital projects and answer projects that have been completed over the last five years, uh, at your, at your desk as well. And just to add, we, Erica and I spoke briefly today, and we did not add this last night, but in Erica's current budget, she does have a line item for restoration and repairs. So if something pops up at a school and we need to tackle it, um, that is outside of what has been approved, then we will use those funds to take care of that.
All right.
And so we're, I'm sorry, Mr. Leach, so we're asking for approval for those projects.
All right, we got a couple of questions, Kristy Fields, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Terry.
Ms. Erica, give me the school names again that you weren't able to put on the line item under the S R three funds, where you use their school codes.
I've updated it now. It's showing there. It's Oxen Nine Pembroke Elementary and St. Paul's Elementary. Thank you, yes.
All right.
Mr. Leach, may I add to that? I'm sorry. So just so everyone's aware, again, Oxen Nine is the old hallway. I think it's part of the original school. As you come in the main entrance, Pembroke Elementary will be the entire school. St. Paul's Elementary will be cafeteria and gym.
All right, Mr. Terry?
With this, um, after we finish with the, uh, the staff parking that's listed here, will that be all of the, uh, will, will all of our staff parking throughout the district be paved?
No, I don't think Central Office paved neither. No, we still got a lot of issues with parking lots.
So are we, are, are, I'm asking about staff parking in particular. Are we prioritizing parking at the soccer field at, at Lumberton over our staff parking at some of our schools?
No, at the, at, at last night's meeting, I think the comment that was just left on there, again, as funds become available.
All right, um, any more questions for Mr. Bobby? Um, thank you, Mr. Bobby. Now we have the audit. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. John, Mr. Simmons? Hit your button.
Make a motion to approve cap outlay projects for twenty-five and twenty-six school year.
Mr. Chair, this comes as a recommendation from the Finance and Construction Committee, so it does indeed a motion or approval. It's a recommendation from the committee, but motion or a second, it's a recommendation from the committee.
All right, so we still got to vote on it, correct?
Yes.
All right. So, um, Mr. Bu- Mr. Bobby has proposed, Mr. Bobby has, uh, a recommendation from the Finance and the Finance and the Construction Committee has been that we opposed, uh, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, capital outlay projects. All in favor? Aye. Everybody, did everybody vote? All in favor? Can you put your hands up? Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Bradley?
Ms. Ms. Monroe's.
Okay.
Ms. Monroe, Mr. Phil- Mr. Phillips and Mr. Monroe, okay.
Yes.
So eight, nothing.
So Ms. Monroe and Mr. Phillips have both left the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So that's approved, eight, zero. Thanks.
All right, now we have the audit by year ending, uh, twenty, uh, June twenty twenty-four by Ms. Erica Setser and Mr. Lee Grissom.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson and board members. Um, I'd like to bring up Mr. Lee Grissom, who is our lead on our audit team for S Press and Douglas and Associates, to give you a general report for our audit year ending June twenty twenty-four, and then we can take some questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, first off, I'd like to thank the, uh, Business Office and Erica and Hugh. Uh, the audit's a seven-month process, it's not an easy thing to go through. Uh, and this year was a good audit, so we issued an unmodified opinion, also referred to as a clean audit opinion on the financial statements. Um, we tested internal controls as required with governmental auditing standards. We didn't have any inter- no internal control findings. And then there were no, uh, compliance, uh, findings noted. So a, a clean audit, a good audit. Um, we issued the report December thirty-first. So, um, the last couple of times that I presented, uh, we had issued the report later. So, um, you know, Erica really worked hard in December over the holidays and making sure we got the report out by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, so we did not have a late audit finding. So, um, that's one month better than the previous year and three months better than two years ago. So continuous improvement as far as getting the records to us. Uh, so big improvement there. A cou- a couple of notes on internal controls. Um, there was only a handful of journal entries, so that signals good record-keeping by your staff. Again, no material weaknesses. Um, overall, the, there's good monitoring in the individual schools. Um, there's kind of internal audits that, that Hugh is still, uh, a part of. And there's usually minor things that are caught, but I think that process has been working really good in our experience. Um, good, good internal controls over purchasing, bank reconciliations. And again, uh, the records were in, in good shape, very few journal entries that we had to make. A couple of housekeeping items. Management provided full access to records. Uh, there were no significant changes in accounting policies, uh, no material journal entries, as I noted, no disagreements with management, no illegal acts, and we did not consult with other auditors. And from a financial standpoint, this is primarily a compliance audit, which it matters more than probably the numbers on the financials. Uh, there was one area of weakness. I don't know if Erica wants to possibly provide context related to the school food service fund. It, the net position did decrease by almost three million dollars in that, in that fund, and that would be, uh, a needs improvement, maybe Erica would comment on that.
Right, as I'm sure you've seen all across the state of North Carolina and other states, the child nutrition department, um, has not been able to keep up with rising food costs and rising, uh, benefits and salary costs. And it is an enterprise fund, meaning it has to be self-sustaining. So while we do still have a little over one month operating balance, that is a cause for concern. As we've mentioned before, we have not been able to charge indirect costs to child nutrition because they have to maintain at least two months before we're able to do that. So one of the things we've all talked about internally is, and our only way to increase revenue in child nutrition because of our, all our students eat free, so we can't have any conversations about increasing pricing because we don't charge students. But we do have to have the conversations about increasing participation. Children can get meals whether they bring their lunch, whether mom and dad bring them lunch. Still, please go through the line in the cafeteria because the child nutrition program does not get reimbursed unless students receive a meal. We don't get reimbursed based on the amount of food or meals cooked that day. It is the amount of meals, uh, served to children. So that's something that we want to, um, take the initiative on and have that conversation with principals and schools as much as possible moving forward.
And I did pull the numbers in that fund. The fiscal year twenty-three, there was only a minor loss. It was, it was ninety-three, ninety-three thousand of a loss. And in fiscal year twenty-two, uh, the school board reported a five hundred and eighty-one thousand to the positive. So a little bit of a, kind of an outlier in the last three fiscal years. Um, but other than that, the numbers were otherwise good on the financial statements. The net position improved by twelve point eight million dollars overall. Uh, your local fund, general fund increased by a million dollars. Uh, your, your general fund, unassigned fund balance is about two months in reserve, uh, which is pretty strong. Um, and your governmental funds combined are about sixteen million dollars. So, um, everything else from a financial metric standpoint was good. And again, there was no compliance issues, no internal control issues. And again, we did some, uh, issue an unmodified, referred to as a clean audit opinion. So, um, and we also, they were, we were able to issue the report, uh, one month early, which is always really positive. So, so any questions?
No? No?
Thank you, sir, for that. I did want to mention that one of the ways we were able to increase our fund balance um, was due to still having S R fund availability that we will no longer have. So moving forward, we don't have the expectation that we'll be able to continue that increase in fund balance, which leads us back to why we have, um, asked for that increase with, um, our county. And I can answer any questions anybody has about the audit report at this time. This has been, uh, sent for approval and approved by the local government commission as well.
Uh, motion being on the table to, uh, approve the audit report by Mr. Trey Britt. A second being made by Melissa Ocean. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you, unanimous.
Chair, if I may, I want to say thank you to Mr. Grissom and his team for your work. We appreciate that so much. And then say thank you to Erica and your team for your work, year in, year out. And we appreciate that, that you provide information that we can make decisions for and about kids on. But thank you for your leadership and your team.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Erica. Now we have the monthly financial report by Ms. Erica Setser.
The monthly financial report was included in your packet, and I can answer any questions anyone has concerning that document.
Mr. John Simmons?
Anything change, Ms. Erica?
No, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion being made to approve the monthly financial report by Mr. John Simmons. A second being made by Mr. Craig Lowry. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget resolution by Ms. Erica Setser.
I've included the budget resolution also in your packet, and that summarizes the budget that was previously approved by the board into purpose functions, which is what our audit team uses to determine if we're over or under budget compliance. And I can answer any questions anybody has about that document.
Mr. John Simmons? Uh, motion being made by Mr. John Simmons to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget resolution. A second being made by Ms. Melissa Ocean. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Same thing, nine, zero. Well, now we have budget amended amendments, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five by Ms. Erica Setser.
So the state, um, public school fund, we received, um, new funding and, uh, or changes to existing budgets with revisions fifty through seventy-seven, and I'm asking for approval of that. And I can answer any questions anyone has concerning the, the budget amendments.
Ms. Melissa Ocean?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Oh, a motion being, uh, a motion being, uh, on the table to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-four, tw- twenty-five budget amendments by Ms. Melissa Ocean. A second being made by Mr. Crystal Monroe. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Melissa Ocean?
I moved at the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County going to closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel. North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three through three eighteen, point eleven, A one and six, and to consult with the attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County. North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three through. for the Public Schools of Robson County, North Carolina General Statutes 143 through 318, point 11A13.
Motion being made by Ms. Melissa Ocean to go into closed session. A second being made by Mr. John Simmons. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, closed session.
Motion to come out of closed session. Motion's been made by Mr. Craig Lowry, seconded by Miss Melissa Ocean.
I know Miss Monroe made the motion. He already did that. Came out of closed session.
I know. We got to do it out front.
Miss Monroe made the.
Motion by Mr. Craig to come out of closed session, and seconded by Miss Monroe, all in favor say aye. All opposed? All right. Motion to approve the closed session minutes. Motion by Miss Crystal Monroe to approve our closed session minutes. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor say aye. Aye, it's got it. Motion to approve classified and certified personnel as presented. A motion being made by Miss Crystal Monroe, and seconded by Miss Melissa Ocean, all in favor say aye. Do we have motion to adjourn? All right. Yes. Let's set that meeting date for... Let's look at the calendar. I'm sorry. Discuss. Let's look at the calendar right now. Yeah, I got 18 on 25th. All right. I want everybody to look at your calendars. We want to come next Tuesday the 18th. Seems like Tuesday work for everybody. Anybody get with that? Next Tuesday, 18th, 6 o'clock? All right. Or you want to do it at 5? Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Okay, that's good. That's good. We'll do it. We'll do 5 o'clock Tuesday. So what... So anybody got a problem with Monday? Yes, let me see. Yes, do you got a problem with Monday? All right, let's go on Monday, on the 17th. We say 5 o'clock. That'll be our work session with the board members and the cabinet, Monday at 5 o'clock on the 17th. Work session, we can include the cabinet. A board meeting, it'd just be only the board members. All right, we had a motion to adjourn by Miss Crystal Monroe. We had a seconded by Miss Melissa Ocean, all in favor say aye. All right, discuss it one more time. Hold on for one second. Mr. Jamal, before we close.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to make one quick announcement. On this coming Saturday, from 9 to 12:30 at Luntan High School, we'll have our annual career fair. So anyone who's listening, this is where certified and classified staff will be hiring, so please come out from 9 to 12:30 at Luntan High School for our annual career fair. Thank you.
All right. So let's go. Meeting adjourned.